I can understand, it feels like we've been in a twilight zone since March the 13th Natalie.
Yes, yes.
Okay, just a couple of items that I know of and in a moment I'll open it up. Uh, number one, we're going to require masks.
Uh huh.
There's any need for any elaboration on that, the mask are the, are the top protective piece of personal protection equipment. And, uh, we're going to require masks inside all building settings, cafeteria, school buses. Uh, we're having all of our facilities treated by EcoVasive. It's a new, uh, technology that it, what it does, the ions within the cleaner bond to all surfaces, tops and bottoms of surfaces. And it is a infection and disease repellent that lasts up to ninety days. So every, about every eighty to eighty-five days, we'll have it treated again. So your surfaces will be, uh, 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 protected from the spread of disease. So that should, that should all but eliminate any surface spread that could potentially take place, uh, with the COVID. We're going to socially distance in the cafeteria. Half the students eat in the cafeteria one week, the other half the next week. In the week you're not in the cafeteria, you'll be in the classrooms. We're going to allow, uh, classes can go outside and convene, weather permitting. We're going to lower the, uh, windows on the buses, uh, to, uh, allow for adequate ventilation as the buses, uh, move up and down the highways to and from their homes to the school. And of course, we're going to regularly clean and disinfect, uh, from a, from an honest perspective. And you, you said it just a minute ago, the twilight zone, you know, we've learned to expect the unexpected.
Okay.
But, uh, I can, I can, I can, I can humbly say from the heart that, that we're going to have our facilities ready for our children. And if you choose to send your child or children back traditionally, we will have them a safe, structured, quality learning environment. We're going to mandate the practices and procedures that will prevent COVID, you know, hopefully, the spread of COVID.
Okay. All right, thanks.
And, uh, for everybody listening tonight, to have faith to know that, 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 that I, I feel very comfortable about that you can send your children back traditionally in the Meriwether County School District. Please, uh, Dr. Maurice Brown, Maintenance Trustee, can you hear Dr. Brown, Natalie?
Yes.
Uh, go ahead Maurice.
Hey, how are you?
Oh, I'm good, how are you, Dr. Brown?
I'm doing well, uh, on top of the, uh, customizing, bargaining the schools by the, uh, by the company that we, we're contracted with, all of the custodians will have a barrel of, uh, disinfectant as well. So on top of the, the bargaining prior to school starting every ninety days, every, it's when every class changes, the custodians will be bargaining the schools with the solution that we purchased from another company. So it's gonna be, I mean, sanitation going on all day long.
And the EcoVasive, the treatment will treat buses as well as the facilities.
Okay, okay.
And that, that, the, 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 the agent that they use has sets up a ninety day protective bond. This is new technology.
Okay.
Our staff has worked diligently, uh, you know, we chose to start school August twenty-fourth, all the way back in January. At the time, I think everybody had heard of coronavirus, but was not real sure of any details regarding coronavirus. But, uh, we had moved our start date back, it, it actually worked out well for us.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Dalton? Lacy. Lacy, are you with us?
I am, hello y'all.
Lacy?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Loud and clear.
Awesome, okay, my question is if we choose to do, um, the remote learning, uh, will they still be allowed to participate in the sports?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, and I have two other concerns, um.
Please, what's the point?
The masks, um, I'm just kinda laughing to myself about that because I have a little one and I can just see these kindergartners in masks, um, they're gonna be soaking wet, they're gonna be, it's gonna be hilarious. Um, and on top of that, the older kids, um, it's a concern because they're breathing in bacteria, like their own bacteria, which sounds like it should be harmless, but if they do not get clean masks every day, then bacteria can overwhelm their lungs and they can develop pleurisy and...
Uh, Ms. Lacy, I want you to keep that second question, or you may still be on question one. I've got our Board of Health Nurse right here, you ready for that one, Ms.?
Sure, um, hey, so, um, as far as the, the little ones go, I have a kindergartner myself, so I completely understand, um, why that sounds like a really crazy idea to have kindergartners wear a mask all day. Um, one thing you could do if your child seems to be really upset by it or seems like they're not gonna keep it on for sure, um, they have face shields that are also approved, right? We're gonna allow those.
Yes.
So a face shield, if you go on Amazon, they actually have these real cute little hats that have a shield just built on to the front of it, and it's meant for little ones. And they just put their hat on and it's got a clear shield in front of it, so they don't have anything, you know, on their face, but it is still keeping a, a barrier between the spit that comes out of their mouth and the air. So it's still helpful, and I think that's a really good option for the, for the younger kids that may have a tough time with the mask, cause I do understand that. Um, as far as, as far as breathing in your, um, own bacteria, that's sort of something that's just floating around Facebook. There's really no reason...
I have respiratory and I know a lady who, uh, suffered from it from working at the grocery store and that was the cause of it.
Okay, so if we are giving out masks at the school and then you can also get them from the health department, you should have, you know, several masks that you can switch out, um, so you're not wearing the same one every day.
That's my answer.
That should have weakened.
Ma'am, the masks that we're dispersing, they're made out of Under Armour fabric and they are washable.
Right, so they will get fresh masks though?
Yes.
Okay, that was...
What we're gonna do, if they ride the bus the first day, we're probably gonna give them a, a paper mask the first day when they get to school. We'll disperse the Under Armour, uh, masks. And, uh, of course, if, if, if you have a customized mask, uh, uh, the principals can approve a, a customized mask from home, as long as it doesn't have any type of derogatory, uh, statement or whatever on it. The principal can look at it and the school nurse and say, yes, this is, this is qualified. The N-95s are only gonna be required by school nurses. But, uh, uh, I wash my mask, that's what I do, I, when I run a load, I'll throw it in the washing machine and it'll be in the dryer. And I, I've, I've used the same one, I've had it well for six weeks now.
Yes, sir, my second concern, I'm sure the nurse, this is better for her, um, and this is above me right now. Um, does she feel that we're over sanitizing? If we're gonna sanitize between class changes, we're gonna use that new technology? And does she feel like we're gonna weaken their immune systems by not exposing them to anything?
That's a good question, and I, I've thought about that myself, even just with kids being so isolated over the summer. I thought, I wonder how this is gonna affect their immune system, you know, when school starts back. Um, given this situation, when you're talking about this many, you know, hundreds of kids in one building, I don't think it's over sanitizing because this is, luckily, this is a short-term way of life. This is not for the rest of their life. Now, if this was gonna go on for years, then I would absolutely agree with you, but for the short term, I don't think that there's any, any harm in it. I think the, the benefits outweigh any negatives from, from...
Yes ma'am, all right, thank you, and that's all I had, and thank y'all.
Lacy, those, those were excellent, excellent, okay.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton? Ashley Hobbs.
Hello.
Hello, Ashley.
Um, I actually have three questions for you.
All right, let's, let's address them one at the time, what's the first one?
The first question is for students that decide to do, or parents that decide to do virtual learning, um, are y'all going to provide, um, a Chromebook or anything for them to be able to do classes? Or is that something parents are gonna have to do?
We do have Chromebooks and we're going to release a remote learning commitment form that we would like to have back August the fourth. And I think everybody knows how the internet bandwidth is in Meriwether County. So we're going to look at individual situations and we'll customize a remote learning plan that will fit the needs of your child. And, uh, and we're going to, you know, we, we want to, want our parents to be involved in the, if, if they choose a remote learning, be sure that you're an integral component of your child's learning. You, I know that all parents are, uh, when we're in face-to-face instruction, but it's, when it's remote and we don't have that day-to-day with them, uh, the parental involvement is just imperative. Good question.
Yes, sir. I, I, I get that a hundred percent, I've been working with, um, my two all summer long. Um, my second question is for the children that are medical fragile that require, um, any kind of therapy, like my child has a, um, rare blood disorder and immune system disorder. So therefore, I know he cannot return to school. Um, but he requires speech therapy. How, is that gonna be something that's gonna be remote learning, or how are y'all gonna do that?
I want, I want you to contact, uh, Ms. Tanya Waller at the Meriwether County Schools. Her number is seven zero six four four one zero six zero one. And, uh, she will advise you on, on, uh, but yes, we will be providing those services.
Okay, and then my last question, um, I'll, my oldest one is, is medical fragile, he is gonna be in kindergarten. Um, I have a one that's right, right up under him, she's four, that is supposed to be going into pre-K. Um, I know pre-K is not necessarily required, um, but the risk of sending her to school and keeping him at home, she could become a carrier or she could become sick with it and then bring it home to him, which is, you know, that's not gonna be a good outcome. Are y'all gonna provide some kind of, um, learning instrument for pre-Kers, or what do y'all suggest?
We're putting our plan together for pre-K right now. The, the plan for pre-K, it, it has to encompass the virtual learning and what our internet scenarios we have that are weak within the county, that limits the virtual part for pre-K. However, the same telephone number for Tanya Waller, I'd like for you to call Dawn, Dawn Woodard, D-A-W-N, Dawn Woodard, and, uh, she will advise you. We're actually putting that plan together right now.
Okay.
And then, uh, Suzie, as far as like one, one child who's at school, returning it, carrying it back home to one possibly who's medically fragile, can you address that right quick, cause that is way out of my expertise?
Well, um, that is a risk, I mean, that is a risk, so for one child to be in a building with hundreds of other children, even if they're all wearing masks, which is absolutely the most important thing that the school system could have decided to do to help slow this down, um, it is still a risk. Um, if your child that's at home that is medically fragile, if you, if, I heard you correctly, you said they have a, an immune, um, issue, that may not be a risk that you wanna take. Um, I couldn't, I couldn't say you should or shouldn't do it, but...
That, you know, that's, um, definitely a risk that I'm not willing to take and I will not take. Um, just because I don't have just him I have to worry about. I also have my husband that is, uh, medical fragile and I have my mother as well. Uh, so that's just, that's not a risk I'm willing to take. And the whole them wearing a mask all day, especially for pre-Kers and, um, kindergartners, that's not gonna work. I mean, they're not gonna keep them on for a whole day without messing with them. So, I mean, I can see that on my own and I can see that, you know, when I'm out in public, I see kids that have masks on and they're constantly messing with them. So I know, you know, that that's, that's not even an option, cause it's not... I see the teachers now, all they're gonna be able to do is keep your mask on or, no, don't touch this or don't do that. So, no, I, I do wanna go virtual with mine, um, I just wanna make sure like with my oldest, he's able to receive his speech. And that with my daughter, if there's not gonna be like a remote learning option for pre-K, I can go ahead and get material to do just straight homeschooling with her.
But I want you to speak to Dawn Woodard about your pre-K, uh, situation, and I completely understand. I do want, I want you to hold on, stay on the phone for a minute. Uh, I do want, uh, Suzie to address one thing about, I understand you have med, medically fragile, not just a child, but other loved ones at home, that, that, that you have, have definite concerns, legitimate concerns. But I do want her to talk about the exposure and what's the latest research on fifteen minutes? Nurse Hammett, please.
Hey, and, um, also I, I wanna preface it by saying, I'm not trying to convince you to do anything different than what you're doing. That's, I think you're making a good choice, this isn't for, this isn't to change your mind.
No.
This is just so everybody understands what, uh, contact is. So in order for someone to be at risk from getting COVID, at the highest risk from getting COVID from someone else, you would have to both be without a mask, within six feet of each other for more than fifteen minutes. So if both people don't have on a mask and you're with, you know, you're within six feet of each other for more than fifteen minutes, that's a direct contact and that's a definite, you're definitely at risk for, for catching it, if they, if one of you has it. If one person has on a mask and the other doesn't, that lowers the risk some. If you both have on a mask, then it lowers it much, much, much lower. So again, that wasn't to change your mind about anything, but just to let everyone know the kind of parameters for exposure.
It's like when, when Suzie first got here today, uh, she was talk, telling about, she, she, being a, a nurse with the Department of Public Health, she's constantly getting research and stories, but she talked about a situation where a person was on a plane and did not, they didn't begin to show, begin to show symptoms until the plane flight was over, but they were highly contagious. But they had a mask on the entire flight, never took it off. Everyone was clear. I'll give you another example, uh, I'm, I was born and raised in Alabama and, uh, I know in Walker County, Alabama, there was a church that had forty individuals to come in and they did some singing and some other religious activities at a church and they didn't wear their mask. And one of them, uh, was positive and contagious and all forty who were inside that facility are, have COVID. Uh, so, but I completely understand your scenario and we're here to support you. Uh, and we appreciate you allowing us the opportunity to serve your children and we'll customize a remote plan for you. The pre-K scenario may be a little bit difficult, but we'll see what type of internet capabilities you have and just please call Ms. Woodard, uh, regarding pre-K and Mrs. Waller regarding the speech therapy for your child. Any more questions tonight?
Um, well, I mean, well, like, okay, I understand where the nurse is coming from with, you know, saying that the risk is lower with both having a mask on, um, but see, there's so many different things out there. Everybody is saying something different, that's just like my son's specialist. All right, my son's specialist will tell you, even if both parties have a mask on, that if it's not a N-95, then you're not safe. Um, so, you know, there's several different...
You're not a hundred percent safe, that is absolutely correct. The only way you're gonna be completely in the clear is if you're both wearing an N-95, I don't disagree with that at all. This is not about, um, risk elimination, it's about risk management. And so what we do know is that masks do stop the vast majority of droplets from going airborne and we know that that reduces the risk enough to make it worth the trouble of asking a bunch of kids to wear a mask all day. It's, there's nothing besides wearing an N-95 that's gonna be completely safe, but this is the most effective.
I, I hundred, I a hundred percent agree with you. Um, last question, um, and I'll, I'll be done. Um, do y'all have a plan already in place, or are y'all creating a plan just in case, um, there is an outbreak in the school to go a hundred percent remote? Or is that something that's gonna be like in March?
All right, uh, no, we will be prepared and, and with, once again, it's with each individual setting, that there's gonna be some children with internet, some without. Fortunately, we have some hotspots in some buses. We will communicate and work closely with the Department of Health regarding a total school closure. You know, there's scenarios, and we're actually going to put out a, a decision matrix and what would encompass closing one classroom or closing a school. You know, we have, uh, six schools and, you know, make, we could have, hopefully not, but we could, you could have an outbreak where one school were to close. But we have, uh, Lynn, you wanna talk about, and, uh, some scenarios that we have? And I, I, I wanna address back in March. Uh, everybody remembers, don't you think back to March the thirteenth, all you listeners tonight? We were told at the time that it was surface, spread through surfaces, not through the air and I think we know now it's through their surfaces. We were thinking about sending a Chromebook home and my technology director and I said, these children have had their hands all over these Chromebooks, that means the virus is probably on the Chromebook, it can be on there for up to seventy-two hours, you're basically sending the virus back into the homes. So what we did was we did, uh, we did worksheets for the remainder of the year. But Mr. Dalton, he's with us, in the event we had to go completely home, just name some of, I know we have Google Classroom, I'm on, Mr. Lynn Dalton, our technology director, he, he's here.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
The only, the, the biggest issue we have in Meriwether County is we don't have a lot of connectivity throughout the county. And that's not just broadband DSL, but that's also cellular service. There's many dead spots and there's many folks that don't have internet. So if we have to go to a total closure again, again, it, there's gonna be, uh, different scenarios for different kids just because some will have to do worksheets or they'll have to have arrangements to be able to get to a hotspot. Some will be able to do Google Classroom if they have internet, uh, some we will have to provide, uh, devices where if possible. Uh, so there's going, it's just so many different situations compared to other counties where there may be a hundred percent connectivity. We're not even close to that.
And then to cut down on the, on the piles and piles of paper, we can put it on flash drives now, right? Gotta cut that down and then the child can turn the flash drive back in.
Okay.
That makes sense, ma'am?
Yes, it, it does, a hundred percent, um, that's, you know, y'all have addressed, one of my biggest concerns was like, you know, there is a lot of places in Meriwether County that you can't get internet service or you can't get phone services, so there would be a lot of children that are left out. Um, and that was one of my biggest things. Fortunately, I'm fortunate enough to be able to have internet and cell service where I live, so...
Right, we are working diligently to solve our internet issues and we already have some hotspots on some buses and Mr. Dalton worked diligently on a grant. I heard tale that the grant was funded for more bus hotspots, but we're waiting on the official, uh, notice from the State Department of Education this week. Uh, they said we were funded, but I have not seen the official yes yet. But, uh, we will, we will, we will work tirelessly and diligently to see that every child has, has ample opportunity. And we're gonna customize a remote plan that will work for each child. It's not gonna, nothing's gonna be ideal, you know, ideal was before Friday, March thirteenth of twenty-twenty. Uh, we just didn't realize we had ideal, I know. Uh, any other questions, ma'am? Hey, thank you. We look forward to serving your children, Mr. Dalton.
We've got somebody, we don't have a name, but we're gonna unmute them, so once they're unmuted, they should know who they are.
Uh, when you're unmuted, you'll know who you are. All right, you're unmuted. Hello? Do you have a telephone number? Okay, come on.
I have a question.
Hello, yes.
Um, yes, my question was, how do the student go about getting their schoolwork for books and for remote learning?
Uh, we're going to, uh, by Wednesday afternoon, we're going to release a remote learning commitment form.
Okay.
And what you'll do is you'll complete that form and then you'll set up some type of meeting with your school leaders at your school, the school that serves your children. And then they're going to communicate with our technology staff and we're going to customize you a remote learning plan that'll work for your child. And, uh, we'd like to have that form back by August the fourth. If not, just call up to the central office at seven zero six four four one zero six zero one and let us know that, that you couldn't, for some, for whatever reasons, you couldn't get it completed by August fourth and we'll, we'll make it work for you. Are you still with me, ma'am? Okay, ma'am, you wanna unmute yourself?
Yes, sir, I'm with you.
Thank you, did that, I hope that answered your question?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, once again, the number's seven zero six four four one zero six zero one, but this remote learning commitment form will be on the school system's website and all the schools' websites. If you have any trouble finding it, you just give us a call and we'll email it to you or get a copy in the mail to you, whatever we need to do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, hey, contact your child's school, contact your child's school and, and, and they'll meet with you either over the telephone, hopefully in person, you can spread out in person and we, and they'll communicate with our technology staff to see what type of internet that you have and do you need a Chromebook or whatever to set it up, so. You have any more questions tonight, ma'am?
No, sir.
Hey, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dalton, you got another? Griffin? Monica Griffin.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you clear. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, great, okay. I have a couple of questions. I have a seventh grader and a first grader. Um, and the first grader is going to need, um, start, be starting an IEP. How will services be um provided, especially since he doesn't have an IEP already, but he's in need of one? And we did start that process.
Yeah, conveniently, here's, you got a pencil and piece of paper, pen?
Yes, sir, I do.
Seven zero six four four one zero six zero one.
Okay.
Uh, tomorrow, ask to speak to Ms. Tanya Waller.
Okay.
And uh, she will get that ball moving for you.
Okay, great, I got that written down. Um, I have a couple of other questions. For the kids who will be doing virtual learning, how many hours a day will they be online on the computers?
Mr. Dalton, you wanna address that one? We're, we, we do not.
We don't have a policy set totally because every student is gonna be kind of a, um, figuring out what the best scenario is based on internet connectivity, devices in the home place or, or things like that. So it, it's really gonna be dependent on what the situation of the student is as to how much that can be monitored.
Okay, and will the?
They prefer that their own task, seven thirty to three thirty, seven thirty, that's gonna be ideal. But we understand, we're gonna customize it to make it work for you.
Now, with, with.
Encourage parents, I didn't mean to cut you off. We're going to earn, encourage parents to become more involved than, than they were even in the traditional setting as far as the day-to-day learning. We're going to really encourage parents. Go ahead, ma'am, I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. Now with that, um, virtual learning, will they be um meeting with their teachers often throughout the day or is it just, they get their assignments and then they are no longer in contact with the teacher? Or how will that work? Will they um have direct contact with the teacher throughout the day? And will she be teaching them a lesson as they're working on it um remotely?
We're going to have staff available to answer questions.
Okay.
And uh, we may have some staff who are homebound for whatever reason and they can assist as well. Uh, but it will be where questions can be asked. Understand, you know, the teachers, they have a commitment to your traditional face-to-face students. So it's not like they can just chime in and interrupt class, for example. Mr. Dalton?
It'll also depend on internet connectivity.
Yes.
If you don't have internet connectivity at your house, you're not gonna be able to have, you know, uh, any kind of dialogue with the teacher online.
Will they receive, will they have taped lessons or how will they get their assignments? Is it a taped lesson type of thing or will the teacher give them assignment in the morning or daily and then she leaves them to do their own thing with the parent?
Well, in a case, let's just say there's a case where you have no internet connectivity and you have no way of getting to a hotspot. Then more than likely it's gonna be on a, a type of device called a flash drive, which you will just put into like, say, a Chromebook or a, a PC or laptop or something like that and complete your lessons that the teachers have done on the flash drive. So you'll have maybe videos, maybe things to work on, maybe things like that. Just wouldn't be online.
Okay, so now, uh, if we have, we have internet connectivity, um, how is that?
Then most likely you would be using like Google Classroom with your teacher and you would definitely be getting feedback, you know, throughout the day and, and working through assignments and things like that.
Okay.
That's obvious, that's the way we wanna do it, but unfortunately, Meriwether County has a lot of uh spots that just don't have any connectivity.
Okay. Now with the Chromebooks, um, that they will be receiving or that is possible to receive, how do you qualify for a Chromebook? Um, can anybody in, any of the children receive one or do you have to meet a certain criteria?
Well, we just, we want, we're gonna meet with every, every person that is choosing remote learning just to find out the exact situation. Again, you know, we're challenged as well as it would be nice if every student in the district had their own Chromebook. But we actually have challenges where we don't have that one-to-one capability at this time yet. So it would have to be a, a situation where we just meet with um each person for remote learning, determine what the situation is and then, and see how we can best serve.
Okay. Um, but it, it, it is possible, but it's kind of.
Oh, it's certainly possible.
We're going to customize your remote learning plan, ma'am, that'll work for you and your children.
Okay. Um, and, and you said those hotspots, they were not gonna be something that was divvied out to each individual home. It's going to be like a location, like a, you said a bus? Did I hear you say?
And, yeah, and we centrally locate the bus. As of right now, that's, that's, that's what, what we're able to do at this point in time.
Okay. Um, we are actually outs, we paid our fee to be outside of the county, we're outside of the county. We live in Talbot, so I don't know how much that would benefit us to have a hotspot near us. Do you know where the placement of the hotspots will be?
Not, right now, they're at each school. Uh, we have to kind of strategically look and see where, i- it, it doesn't really do any good if we put a hotspot somewhere where there's no cellular coverage because this is through cellular service. And, and these things, cellular service is not like DSL at home. It's not extreme bandwidth, so it's kind of challenging as well. If you have internet at your home place, you're gonna have far better internet than a hotspot.
Let's hope so.
Fingers crossed.
Good, good point.
I appreciate the question, you answering the questions. Thank you, sir.
Anything else tonight?
No, sir.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Taylor, we have another questioner. John Underwood. John Underwood.
Yeah, I just had, uh, literally two questions, um, because the income with my daughter's month, they, they're thinking about sending them to the virtual learning for this year, but just that city, um, if you do intend on sending the kids um to school, how many students are you gonna have in a classroom? And my other question would be, um, are you guys, is whatever you choose, is that set for the whole year or do you have a certain point in time when they can re-enroll for maybe, like, if they're doing virtual, they can re-enroll for the, um, face-to-face learning, like sending the kids to school?
Great question, John. Uh, if you choose remote learning in your kindergarten through grade eight, we, we want you to commit for nine weeks. If your child is grades nine through twelve, wanting to commit for the first semester.
Okay.
If you, if you start traditional, the face-to-face, and for some reason you feel that remote's a better option for you, you can move to that, but you'd be bound for the nine weeks and then the rest of the semester.
Okay.
And uh, as far as the number of students per room, uh, we do have a, a lot of, uh, open spaces and, and some large cla, larger classrooms in our system. We're going to strategically do our best to, uh, space the furniture out as best we can. And uh, where that's why we are requiring masks. And when you require masks and, and remember the, we're doing the, the newest technology with e-commerce as far as the, the treatment of the facilities and the, uh, furniture and the buses. That's going to, uh, really alter any effectiveness of, of the spread of, uh, viruses and disease such as COVID. Um, social distancing inside the classroom and the buses, John, is just impossible. That's why wearing the mask is so imperative.
Okay, and then I, well, then that leads me to two other questions I have is, um, will you guys be sanitizing the buses as far as like child transportation on a regular basis? And then my other question is, um, will they have thermometers for the bus drivers to like, you know, say, temp the students, tech, uh, student temperatures before they're allowed on the buses?
Uh, we're going to encourage parents to take the temperatures at home. We're not going to take temperatures as they load the bus. It is, it is just a traffic safety hazard. It really is. For that bus driver to be sat there in the middle of the road with a stop sign out and checking the temperatures. The children have to have their mask on the bus. Remember, like what the nurse said just a minute ago, we talked about that you have to have your mask on. If you've got your mask on, like the person on the plane, they didn't spread it. You go to the church where nobody had the mask on and all forty people contracted COVID. But what, uh, but yes, we're going to, 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 uh, with the newest technology, we're gonna treat all the buses. And that newest technology lasts up to ninety days. But we're also gonna spray the buses before and after each route. And remember, ventilation is a, is a great deterrent of the spread of COVID. So we're going to, uh, weather permitting, and if it's raining sideways, we're gonna let the windows up. But even if the bus were to have, uh, air conditioning, we're going to not run the air conditioner and we're going to let the windows down to ventilate. We feel very comfortable, John, with this.
Okay, I think that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, John.
All right, we have someone on an iPhone. We're gonna unmute them now.
iPhone, you're being unmuted.
Okay, I have two questions. Okay, the first question, cause I just tuned in. The first question is, when do we have, what day? Do, when is the last day decided we wanna go remote? Or do I want her to come there face-to-face with the teachers? What day is that?
We prefer that you let us know August the fourth. And we're going to release the remote learning commitment form by Wednesday. Now, if you change, if you change your mind after that, all you gotta do is call us up here at the Meriwether County Central Office at seven zero six four four one zero six zero one.
Okay.
We won't search child and, and if remote learning's your choice, we will build you a customize you a plan that works for your children.
Okay. And my second question, God know I knew, I hope it doesn't happen. Okay, when if, uh, you know, like, a person, kids, like, will y'all shift to school now? Or will they keep going to school or what?
Uh, I'm gonna refer that to, uh, our nurse.
Okay.
It, there's, a, and we're going to actually disperse a decision matrix and it will show you. But, uh, Ms. Hammer?
Hey there.
Hey.
I'm not gonna bog it down with, with too much detail, but basically the way this is broken down is by, um, does the child or the teacher have a direct exposure, which remember, well, you may not have heard it if you just tuned in, but a direct exposure is when you're without a mask with, within six feet of someone for more than fifteen, right? So if your child has had, if your child has had a direct exposure, but they're not showing any symptoms, then they might fall into the, uh, let's see. Basically, they'll be quarantined for fourteen days.
Okay.
Right?
Uh-huh.
Uh, if they have been diagnosed with COVID, so they've got a, a, they got tested and the test was positive, but they're not showing any symptoms, then they can return to a school after at least ten days have passed since their positive test and they are still asymptomatic.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and if they're, if they become symptomatic within those, that time period, then that, that count would start fourteen days from when their symptoms started.
Okay.
And, but there's two more. Look, this is, this is a lot. You're gonna get this though, so you can read over it. But if they're diagnosed with COVID, they tested positive and they have symptoms, they can return to school once three days have passed without a fever and improvement in respiratory symptoms and ten days have passed since the symptoms first appeared.
Okay.
Then, the last one is if they have had direct exposure and at least one symptom, they can return to work, same thing. Once three days have passed without a fever and their, their cough's getting better and ten days have passed since their symptoms first started. So there's a lot of little kind of categories they might fall into, but they're gonna, they're gonna be giving you guys this so you can, you can have it for reference.
Okay.
Any more questions, ma'am? Okay, all right.
We don't have any others at the, at this time.
All right, what I'm going to do for about five minutes, I'm just gonna mute the phone. And, uh, and you'll see it if somebody wants to speak, right, Lynn? All right, so I'm gonna mute it. Good evening. Again, I understand we have a couple of callers waiting. I do wanna let the listeners know that, uh, that we, uh, we, uh, we are going to do temp temperature checks as the students enter. And they're actually, uh, stand-up temperature check devices. And, uh, in addition to that, we'll have the handheld infrared thermometers too. Who's our first caller, Mr. Dalton?
Lacy.
Lacy again.
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, Lacy.
All right, um, the stand-up temperature checkers, are you talking about the thing that you look at and it takes your picture and your temperature at the same time?
That's what we're going to have and they're portable, yes.
Those don't work. Um, I've been to the hospital a few times and they'll tell you they're not accurate. Um, so definitely.
In addition to that, we're going to have the handhelds as well.
Yes, those work. Okay.
Oh, uh, ma'am, 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 I, I want all the listeners to know that we do have research that indicates that, that, that those temperature devices are very effective.
They don't work though, I promise.
Uh, uh, well, I, I'm going, uh, well, I'm gonna publicly dispute you on that.
You're fine. Ups, and I'll tell you that.
I say they do work. We say they do. I'll tell you what, you send your child traditionally for, uh, face-to-face instruction, you just let the principal know, we'll have plenty of handhelds out there. We will check yours after they go through. We'll check them with a infrared to, 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 uh, to, to make you feel better, okay?
Yeah, but what my concern, um, was the more I thought about it with the precares and the smaller elementary school, I think, uh, the nurse had a very good suggestion with the face shields and I think it would be a good idea and very proactive to go ahead. And since it is droplet and the little kids are gonna be sneezing and coughing and stuff more than the older children, especially pre-K kindergarten, first, second, third, I think that it would be ideal for them to have those face shields because the more I thought about it and the more I remembered my own wearing that mask for, I mean, he didn't even wear it probably an hour. And it was soaking wet and it got me concerned that he was breathing in so much moisture. And if the teachers are required to make them wear it and all that, and then the bus drivers don't have the, um, capability to just monitor them like that and with those masks on, it's, it's a real safety concern. I think it would be better to mandate that they have the face shields because it really scares me to think of them having to wear a wet one or just the complications that could come from it getting around. I just, it's, I think she had a wonderful idea with those face shields and I just wanted to, uh, say that I think. face shields and I just wanted to, uh, say that I think maybe it would be a great idea and very proactive to just go ahead and require that the little ones have the face shields instead of the masks. But, and I wasn't being ugly or anything about that temperature thing, I've just been to the hospital a few times and I know theirs wasn't very reliable and they're just checking.
Maybe theirs has a, has a default or's, uh, uh, capacitor's burned out or something, but no ma'am, what, what we've looked at is, uh, works is, is very effective.
Okay.
And I want, I want the public to believe in what we're trying, okay?
Okay.
Uh, regarding the face shields for the pre, I could tell you that we're going to, uh, we're going to, uh, get some, uh, face shields and, uh, we have several of them coming in through the Georgia Emergency Management Agency and, uh, we will, uh, we will work to disperse those out. And you're more than welcome as a parent if you want to, if you want to get a face shield for your own child, you're more than welcome to provide that, okay?
Yes, is that something that we could, like the churches or, you know, parents or anybody, is that something that we could get together and donate to the schools?
You certainly may, we have some churches already doing that, definitely.
Amazing, all right, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Lacy, thank you. Mr. Dalton?
Joshua Toons.
Joshua Toons. Hello and good evening, how are you doing today?
Good evening, Joshua.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir, loud and clear.
Fantastic, for starts, I'd like to say thank you very much for, for hosting this conversation, uh, and addressing a lot of the, the questions that, uh, the public have surrounding their, their children and their education. And I'd also like to thank all the teachers and professionals that are on the phone, uh, already projecting the, the challenges that they may be facing this coming year, so thank you all very much in advance. Um, just for clarification points, uh, did I hear you say earlier that, uh, if we say send our students in for, uh, face-to-face, that if we find that's not working, that they can in fact come back to, to a remote setting? Did, did I hear that correctly?
Yes. But if you choose the remote setting, uh, we want, uh, you to commit grades K through eight for nine weeks and then grades, um, and then, uh, at least the first semester for grades nine through twelve.
Okay. My, my, my concerns aren't so much, uh, with the dynamics, uh, I have faith and, and confidence in the school system that they're gonna do the best for our children. I do have concerns for the professionals, the, the staff that will be teaching, um, with multiple platforms, be it through the online process or the face-to-face, uh, will there be, uh, how, how, how are we going to be able to take care of our teachers in the same respect, question one. Question two, surrounding the face-to-face, um, I've had several students, uh, that have attended the schools, my oldest, or my second just graduated this weekend from Granville, um, and I know that there've always been concerns about the dress code, how are you going to enforce, especially in the middle and high schools where you have these students that are very set in their own ways, how are you going to enforce the face masks during the course of the day? What, what will be in place and, and what, what, what challenges are you already perceiving that may overcome, that, that may, you may face rather?
Uh, I'm going to allow our nurse, I understand that there's going to be, you know, some getting used to the mask and that makes, uh, that's, that's definitely a, a legitimate question that we have, but I wanna turn it over to Nurse Hammer and, uh, she'll talk a little bit about the mask, go ahead.
Hey, so this isn't super scientific, but, um,
Right.
I, I totally understand your concerns on that. The masks are, they're not fun for anyone, but I think when the adults, um, understand the importance and they're able to convey that to the kids, I think that's step one for parents and teachers to let their kids know why this is important, why it's, you know, you're protecting your community. Um, I've got three kids myself and my husband's a teacher, so I completely understand all sides of this. Um, and we talked to the kids the other night and just said, hey, you know, we're gonna start wearing your mask, um, several hours a day before school starts back to get you used to it and it's not gonna be fun, but it's just for a little while and you're protecting your teachers and your classmates when you do that. Um, you're a part of the solution instead of a part of the problem. Um, I've got a kindergartner, a fifth grader and an eighth grader, um, and once they start wearing them, you, you just kinda get used to it, um, and it's especially important to find a mask that you like, so ahead of time. I've got a couple of masks that I really hate wearing, they're too, they're too heavy and I can't breathe, but I've got a couple that are nice and lightweight that I breathe just fine in. So I think if they have a mask that they don't really like, try, try a couple others if you have the ability to do that, because some are a lot more breathable than others are. Um, and I think, you know, as far as, you know, the, the teachers having to combat, just like you said, you know, you've already got the dress code and now you're adding another thing they have to think about. And I think when you have the support, you know, especially if your superintendent and your principals and they're gonna back those teachers up, I think that definitely helps the teachers to enforce that, just like they do with the rest of the dress code.
Fan- fantastic que, or fantastic answers, I appreciate that. Again, the, the concern is, is, is not just the, the utilization of face masks, I'm concerned about the teachers themselves and the additional workload of trying to juggle between a face-to-face and an online, uh, uh, challenge as well. Um, and I know that, that, uh, and this is off topic of, of COVID, uh, we have some dynamic and fantastic teachers and we have, historically in the county, have had, uh, struggles keeping great teachers. Uh, do we have something in place to, to make this transition easier for them while juggling this COVID fiasco, all right? So a- a- again, it, it's COVID related, I just wanna make sure that we're taking care of our professionals at the same time.
Excellent question. Understand that we're going to have some staff members, probably for whatever underlying help conditions, that will not, might not be able to actually, um, work inside the building and, um, and what we could do is assign those, uh, staff members, some of our remote learners as a, as an extra mode of instructional help.
Got it.
And, and we will, we will customize a remote learning program that works for your child.
Got it. I, I know the, uh, the remote worked fairly well, uh, towards the end of the year. Um, I saw my son starting to be, become somewhat disengaged while we were sitting there and pushing on him. Um, and then just another point of clarification or just, uh, they will still be able to participate at, at school functions even if they do the remote learning, did I understand that correctly?
Yeah, yeah.
Got it. Miss, do you have any other questions? Excuse me, I'm just asking my wife who's listening in as well.
Okay, yes.
One second. Uh, in regards, and going back to, to the dress code, uh, what, what will be, what would the discipline be? All right, so, uh, we, we already understood, I understand that, uh, if we do the face-to-face, we have to commit to a certain period of time, they have the option to do the remote learning. Um, if, say my son, I, I sent him in for face-to, uh, face-to-face, and I'll preface, I don't foresee this being an issue, but say he decides just to disobey the rule and not wear his face masks, what, what types of discipline would come into play in that respects? And then to flip that, uh, we already, we've already learned that there's a lot of children that may not have access to internet access. Um, if they, in regards to, let me get my, let me get my, my thoughts together, in regards to the dress code and the, the utilization of face masks, if there's a disobedience to that, how, how do these kids still learn, all right? Will, will the schools say, okay, you can't come back? Um, you have to obey this, how, how, how does that work in regards to discipline?
Not wearing the mask is a little bit more than just a dress code violation.
I understand.
And what I'm, and I've got the Department of Health Nurse right here beside me, so you just break in if I mess up. The mask is not protecting you from others, it's protecting others from you.
Right.
And so if, if you deliberately defy and continue to not wear, I, I mean, I understand there's situations where it slips off and it's like the nurse said a minute ago, you have the fifteen minutes within six feet, no mask, I mean, we're, we, we, we know this data and this research and we have this in mind. But if you just, i- if, if we have a, a, an individual who just absolutely refuses to wear it, I mean, we'd have to, you know, get, get the family and the parents involved and stress to them importance of, we're protecting others from your, a, a possible infection and, and contagious state of your individual person, that's why you're wearing the mask. And, uh, we want you to protect others just as we want others to protect you.
Got it, understood. Fantastic, again, thank you all so much for hosting this telephone call.
Thank you.
Uh, if we have additional questions, uh...
We'll be on tomorrow night too, listen, we gonna get through the mask thing, okay?
Oh, absolutely.
Uh, we'll get through that one.
Absolutely. Th- thank you very much for fielding my questions.
Hey, we appreciate you calling. Who we have next, Mr. Dalton?
We got the iPhone again, so we're gonna have to unmute.
iPhone, unmute, please.
My question is, is, can you hear me, Dr. Griffin?
Yeah, I can, yes ma'am.
Okay, my question is, is I have a junior in high school, if we decide to do the remote learning, how will that affect his dual enrollment?
Regarding if, regarding the dual, I tell you what, I want you to call Dawn Woodard, seven zero six four four one zero six zero one.
Okay.
And see, like, if the college, the dual classes, if, if, if your child is take, is he, is he or she taking the, uh, the dual class online or on-site at the college?
My understanding is on-site because he's gonna be doing the welding, we've already enrolled him.
Right.
Through school.
Okay, so, uh, you'll have to work out with the college if they're willing to do a remote learning aspect for you at the college for the dual enrollment. And look, take it from a gentleman who taught agri-science education thirteen years, it's hard to learn welding online, okay?
And that, that was my question, is if, with it being a small class, as far as the dual enrollment goes, you know, the welding class itself, he wants to participate, but if he cannot participate and be doing remote learning from home for the, you know, basic school, he wants to go to school. So that's where we're up in the air right now because he is...
I feel very comfortable as far as a child in a welding shop, they're each in their own individual booth welding and you have ventilation fans, especially at the collegiate level, they have, uh, the best facilities and the best equipment. You're gonna have, uh, uh, you'll have ventilation fans running in the background, uh, I feel, I feel very comfortable about your child at dual enrollment classes.
Okay, so just call Miss Woodard.
Now, understand that our facilities, you know, we're treating it with the EcoVasive, you know, I can't promise you that the restroom doors and, uh, the doors in and out at the, at the college are gonna be treated at that club, okay?
Right, I work, I mean, I work at Unity, so I know what steps are being taken, but with him, he's just recently diagnosed diabetic, recently diagnosed high blood pressure, so with him, it's kind of a flip of what do we do at this point?
Suzie, I got the nurse right here.
Okay.
I got diabetic, high blood pressure.
Yeah, that, those two things definitely put him at a higher risk and I think as long as the school system is okay with him learning virtual for his high school classes, but still attending his dual enrollment college class in person, as long as that's okay with the school system, that sounds like probably your best bet to me.
And see, that's what we were thinking, but he just did not wanna miss out on the opportunity of doing his dual enrollment.
So I think what Dr. Griffin is saying is he can do virtual high school classes and still attend his welding class in person, right? That wouldn't be a problem, right? As far as you know.
As far as I know, let's check out when we're done with it, okay?
Okay, all right.
Cause she's gonna have to run that, you know, i- i- it's dual, it's not just the school system, it's the college too, you gotta have both sides to agree.
Right. Okay, I think that was all I had.
And then, let me say this, back a minute ago, the, uh, I believe it was John Underwood, the teacher of record in the classroom, may or may not be the same teacher that's teaching online, for example, all this has to be determined as we know how many families choose remote. The thing is, we will, we will create a plan that works for your child and get them the help that they need, the tutoring and remediation assistance that they need.
Right.
And, uh, Lacy, if you're still listening, please email me at robert dot Griffin at mcssga dot O R G. I got some good information about the transfer of bacterial infections inside of a mask I'd like to share with you. Once again, that's robert dot Griffin, G R I F F I N, at mcssga dot O R G. Next question, Mr. Dalton.
Yeah, Mabel Rosario.
Mabel, Ms. Mabel. Good evening, Ms. Mabel, you with us?
She's still muted.
Ms. Mabel, you're, you're muted.
I can, can you...
I can hear you, yes ma'am.
Oh, okay, uh, thank you for the Zoom, uh, meeting for parents, educators and other people that have concerns about the COVID nineteen.
I appreciate you participating.
I had three questions. In terms of the bus situation, you said you're gonna distance the children six we, uh, six feet apart from each child, um, will the bus pickup will be earlier, is it gonna be a little later, cause I know there's different, uh, grades. I had three kids and one of them at middle school and I have two at Mountain View, so I don't know how that pickup is gonna work, is they gonna pick up the younger group first and then the middle school? I don't know, um, is anybody gonna help me with that question about the bus situation?
I have Dr. Brown here, let me chime in and say this, so...
Okay, thank you.
Um, there's no socially distance on school bus, okay?
Okay.
We're going to require face masks on the bus and just as a nurse stated earlier, if everybody's wearing their mask all the time on the bus, just like the story I told earlier about the plane flight where the gentleman
Yes.
was positive and very contagious with COVID, but he never took his mask off, he didn't spread it to anyone else. We're going to treat the buses, the inside of them with the EcoVasive cleaning agent that, uh, that's going to, uh, have a surface that prevents the spread of disease and bacteria for up to ninety days and before the ninety-day timeline, we're going to spread it. We're also going to lower our windows on the bus, weather permitting, to, uh, allow for ventilation, which is a definite deterrent of the COVID. Dr. Maurice Brown.
Uh, good evening, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Oh, well, so, uh, let me make sure I understand your question, so you're asking, are the, the smaller kids going to ride the bus with their bigger kids?
Yeah, cause usually pick them up all at one time, that's how I remember, you know, before all this COVID nineteen's happening.
Right.
So I'm not sure it's gonna be different or it's just gonna be the same, we just require masks, windows down, depending on weather permitted, so...
It, it's still going to be the same, we're just trying to put all the safety precautions in place to make sure that the kids are, are practicing the, uh, make sure that we're in the mask and we're, we're trying to sanitize buses, but the, as far as the time, you know, the drivers will let, you will, the drivers will let each student know what time they're gonna be there, it's not gonna be much difference in the time. It's not gonna be much difference in the time.
Okay. I just want to make sure they get ready on time. I'm for traditional learning and if they have to wear their mask, if that's part of their life for now, I'm for it, because I'm teaching them right now, and when we go to the store, you have to wear your mask, or you can't go. And they want to go out, because they get tired of staying in the house, I understand that.
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
Okay. Thank you so much for answering that question.
Yes ma'am.
Yes ma'am, Ms. Mabel, any more questions?
Yes, Victor Rosario, the husband here, thank you for taking my answer.
Hey Victor, how are you?
Oh, good, good. I just have a question in reference to, is it possible to get the bus drivers an assistant? Because I know you said it's a difficult task for picking them up, but I believe that if they had some help, it'd probably be a little easier transition for the bus drivers.
If you put an assistant on there, what you've done is put another person. You weakened your, what distancing we can do, you have weakened that. We're going to load the bus from the back to the front and there will be a seating chart. Now, there are instances where there is a bus monitor required for a child who needs some special services, some type of special service. But what you're doing, if you add another person on the bus, Victor, you've just made your social distancing that much less. And social distancing on a bus is very, it's impossible. That's why wearing the mask is imperative. And if a child forgets a mask, the bus drivers will have paper ones and the good paper ones to hand them, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Victor, any more questions?
I have another question about the testing. My children and I got tested for the COVID-19 and we're tested negative. So is the paperwork required to, you know, hand them before school start? I don't know if that's a requirement now, now this is going on, I'm not sure if that's part of the health. I don't know how to say it, but is that part of a health requirement before going back to school, sending my kids back?
No. Nurse Hammer?
We are super, super overwhelmed with testing right now. It's taking longer and longer for people to get their results back. They're sitting in line for much longer. It would make a real big mess to try to test all of the kids in a very short window of time. It just, the juice isn't worth the squeeze on that one. So you're basically waiting on, you know, a reason to test. It would be, it would be a big headache for everybody to try to get tested all at once.
I mean, my children tested negative, thank goodness. And practicing social distancing and all the rules that was enforced by Governor Cam and everybody else, you know, in the store, I respect that. But you don't need any paperwork, seeing that we're okay to go back to school for the children?
By the time school starts back, you could have been exposed a thousand times between getting that negative result back and going to school for the first time. So it's, no ma'am, it's really not necessary, just given the fact that you could test negative and then go to the grocery store without your mask on and get it the next day. I mean, it's just, especially at that much time between, there's just really no, there's no reason to do that.
Oh, okay. And I have one more question, is school gonna... I'm sorry.
That's okay, I was just gonna say, there are circumstances, you know, if your child or you are exposed directly to someone with it and they don't have on a mask, that's when, you know, you start the 14-day quarantine and you need a negative test result and all that good stuff, but that won't be needed prior to starting school. That's all, I just wanted to clarify that.
Alright, thank you, I appreciate it.
You had one more question?
One more question. Yes sir. Will school start officially August 24th? Or you're still deciding, because you said before about the virtual and the traditional, you're getting parents to put in their input first before you initiate the start of school on time? I'm not sure how that's gonna go about at this point.
No, we're starting Monday, August 24th. And before the end of this week, we're going to release, it's called a Remote Learning Commitment Form. And we'd like to have that form back by August 4th. If not, just call the central office and we'll work with you on it.
Oh, okay. Alright, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
We appreciate you calling. Mr. Dalton, we have anybody else? iPhone.
I'm sorry, Dr. Griffin, I have one more question.
And this is?
Roseanne Roberts.
Hey Roseanne, okay, alright, go ahead.
Question is, will there be points throughout the day? Because I know I wear a mask when I go out and sometimes it is hard to breathe. Will there be points during the day that they will actually be able to breathe for a second without the mask? Or will they be required to wear them the complete time?
I think probably all teachers are gonna try their very best to let the kids go outside as much as they can. In my opinion, there's no reason that a child, a class cannot go outside, take their mask off, maintain their six feet of distance, because then you've got the fresh air and the sunshine working on your side. To give those kids and the teacher a break, to let them take their mask off and get some deep breaths outside, I think is perfectly safe.
Okay, and that was just a question, because I know I have a five-year-old and she cannot stand to wear it.
Yeah.
So...
I'm 50 and I'm in trouble.
So, okay, thank you so much.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Got one, Mr. Dalton?
No, but how about a few questions from the chat room? And you can answer them pretty easy.
Alright, go ahead.
So will staff or medical personnel check the temperature at each place?
Yes, as they come in, and we'll have the infrared thermometers and we're going to have the stand-up temperature devices. It's also going to do the face recognition as well.
Let me hear my questions back there.
Alright, temperatures will be checked daily, infrared thermometers and the stand-up devices. And research indicates those stand-up devices perform well.
Are there other schools using this product that we're talking about that bonds to the...
Yes, several. There are, we have, the vendor is a retired principal of ourselves, he's a retired principal from Crawford County High School. Forgive me, I can't remember his name right now, but yes. What's his name? Ed Mashburn, exactly. Yes. In fact, I put an article out, if you look on your, on the website, you'll see a tile of articles that says, "Maryweather County School District will use newest technologies to ensure buildings are protected against viruses." Or you can go to www.eco-ecovasive.com, www.ecovasive.com.
Looks like we've answered most of these. Can you repeat the contact number to the school?
Yes, to the central office, 706-441-0601.
And where do we go to pick up remotely learning forms?
They'll be available online, on all of the, not just the school systems, but all the schools' websites. And you can call the central office if you're unable to download or access it and we'll email it to you or get you a copy of it. And if all else fails, you can just call your school, set up a meeting with the principal at the school and they'll have it set up for you.
That's all the questions on the chat, we don't have anybody raising their hand right now.
Anybody more hand raised? It's 7:22 PM, I think everyone, hour and 22 minutes tomorrow night. You think of another question, same callers tonight, tomorrow night. Please call back. Remember, Lacy, if you're on there, please email me at robert.griffin@mcsga.org. I'm also gonna have Mr. Dalton to post this article up on the website as well. We had several concern with bacteria being spread inside the mask. But anything else from any of the panel tonight that I'd like to add? We look forward to everyone, we'll, same time tomorrow night, 6 PM. Please spread the word and wish everyone a good night.